All right, so open the meeting at seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Right. But there's a lot, I think there's a lot left up there though. That's what shoes off the big.
You can do the 35 Cape Road first, get to that.
Okay, thank you.
It's right here.
Well, doesn't, we don't need, it's just a continuance, so we don't need to read anything.
What's the date on the continuance?
Yeah, you just have to read, that's, no, 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 that's not it.
Yeah, I understand, right, okay.
What would be the date on the continuance?
Listen.
Yeah, just sit down there.
What would be the date on the continuance?
Oh, September thirteenth.
Are you just need a motion or do you need to read that?
Okay, good. I'm just gonna read it, then you can make the motion. So. On August twenty-sixth. Meeting on August twenty-sixth for 35 Cape Road has been continued to the next meeting. We have not seen any filed decision from the planning board and cannot make the engineering commitment both in money and in time for the changes. We believe the decision should be, should show. Required, do you have any idea when we will see the decision? Does anybody know that?
No.
Actually, I talked to Bill today. And he asked me to get all the meeting minutes together for the 35 Cape Road.
Okay.
And he's gonna go, somebody's gonna pick him up tomorrow.
Okay.
And then he's gonna get in touch with Cynthia.
Okay.
And try to get it done.
Make a motion, what's the next meeting?
Make a motion to.
September thirteenth. Thirteenth.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for 35 Cape Road for September thirteenth, seven PM.
Second. Go in favor.
James Squark, aye.
Damon, aye. All right.
You don't have to do that anymore.
You don't have to? Ah, good.
Just say, I guess, we know we're here, right? Okay, this is, we'll open the public hearing for twenty-seven, so we're gonna open the continuation of the public hearing for twenty-seven, twenty-nine Hartford Avenue West. Affirmative plans.
Oh, okay.
That's you too.
And Jeff wasn't able to get an updated review letter for this one.
Well, he's here, he can, he can.
That's okay.
You, you already went over all this. Just haven't got the letter.
I've, I've worked back and forth, this is Brackett move?
No, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Brackett move. Guys want full-size copies or small ones?
I've got, these are the.
Small ones. Thank you. One copy over there, we can just all share. Yeah, see, I'll put it right here.
Probably, yeah, because it's boring.
Give me one, just put it up here.
Hey, John, anytime you do anything else, just use one big one, and all the other ones eleven by seventeen?
Yeah, I have eleven by seventeen. If that's the case, I don't need new ones.
Hold on.
Just saving these past the listening.
No, I'll, I'll do you.
No, they won't go with that.
Oh, okay.
Yes, and you and I talked about it a while ago. It's all right.
Oh, there we go, I like the color, I like the color.
Yeah, this has everything you're gonna need.
That's all pre-farmed.
September thirteenth.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, no, thank you, thank you, but no, thank you, John. Anybody else? I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering, Engineering Consultant of the Planning Board. With respect to Brackett Road, we did, um, spend some time since the last meeting, um, I've spoken with, um, Sean Riordan of Tetra Tech on multiple times, they were working through the hydrology, they shared with me, um, and I reviewed, uh, earlier last week, a draft of the, of revised hydrology calculations that addressed, um, the most major point in our review letter, which had to do with the analysis point for the hydrology. In short, was my argument that attenuation or reduction, if you will, of peak rates of runoff needs to occur before the storm waters enters any of the stormwater, uh, wetland resource areas, um, and, and the wetland resource areas shouldn't, it can't be modeled as upon to, to demonstrate compliance with the reduction. I won't get into the details, I, Sean had a different position, but nevertheless, uh, we discussed it back and forth, and the short of it is, he's made revisions that, in the draft of those hydrology calculations, I was satisfied with the concept, it looks like there was a, a, a reduction, um, we were since then provided official, if you will, hydrology calculations and planned revisions that address not only that comment in our review letter, but everything else, uh, we received those about the middle of last week or so, and we have not quite finished a follow-up review of that. So I don't have a, an official position for this board this evening, uh, but I can say that, that I'm very confident we're gonna have a, uh, an official position that says, yeah, we're all right, but I just, I can't say that.
Everything that they, that was questioned was resolved with their engineers and.
That, that's, that's, that's right, um, other, other, um, issues, um, we really didn't have much of a discussion, they were making some revisions, but that, that stormwater issue was the big one, and I don't wanna speak for Sean, but I'm not in a position to tell you, yes, everything's okay, go ahead, inside the plans is what I'm, what I'm telling this board.
Could you, would you be comfortable if it was contingent on the approval of, uh, the hydrology?
I would be comfortable if it was contingent upon satisfactory review, follow-up review of the comments issued in our first letter dated. July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and when I say satisfactory, satisfactory, um, I, I mean satisfactory to the planning board. I, I, I always urge the boards, don't make it contingent upon me being satisfied, I want the board to be satisfied, in case we get to a position on something else that we don't agree, the board has the final say, not me.
Sean.
John Manon, yeah, so we, I just handed back to you guys this, we've addressed every issue, um, by number, all of Jeff's issues, um, I know Jeff said the biggest thing was the drainage, and him and Sean have been going back and forth for a couple weeks on the drainage, uh, but there was some draft, there was drafting errors, there was some drain manholes missed, and all that stuff's been taken care on the, taken care of on the current set of the plans.
Why don't we go down on one by one, John, if you wouldn't mind?
Oh, sure.
Uh, so number one, uh, Graves had no issues, it says on this, no response required. Item number two, the plans are missing a reference to the group preliminary plans, group preliminary plans missing had been added, it's middle of this, included on the culvert page of the plan set. Number three, the plans need to identify the ownership of all the budding properties within five hundred feet, um, we've added all the budding properties within five hundred feet. Number four, on sheet C one oh one and C one oh two, the FEMA panel number was missing, the FEMA panel numbers were added to sheets one oh one, one oh two. Setback lines in house circles, um, needed to be added to the plans, uh, setback lines and house circles were added to the, to the plans. Number six, sheets, uh, G one zero two five five, number two, and C one seventeen need to show bounds at the easternmost point of the entrance, at station one plus nine and six, two bounds and eastern bound at station three plus oh four, and the bounds coordinate table on sheet C one oh seven will need to be updated accordingly, that has been done, the bounds were shown. On sheet one zero two five five, number one, the minimum dimensional requirements for open space lot community need to be added for lot dimension style, that was added, the minimum dimension requirements for, on the lot dimension also need to be added for the conventional development subdivision, those have been added. Except at lot one, number eight, except at lot one, the drain easement and temporary construction easement, there were impound to the road are missing from sheets G one oh two five five, number one through five, those were turned on, there was layer shut off. Signature space for the planning board was missing on sheets one through five, those were added. The pro-stormage drains are missing from profiles on C one fifteen and one sixteen, same thing, a layer was shut off, they didn't print, those have been, uh, turned on, and those were added. The plans are missing a list of waivers and proposed construction sequence of timing for the subdivision, those were both added, uh, the waivers were added, and, uh, I believe a construction sequences was added, Sean?
Yes.
The plans grows a four-foot sidewalk and a three-foot wide vegetated shoulder on one side of the road with no curves on either side of the streets, uh, the rules and regulations require a five-and-a-half-foot sidewalk and a five-and-a-half-foot grass strip on both sides of the road with curving, um, we've had, we've had this discussion about that a few times, I've been in, starting with the pre-pollinary plan, that we're shrinking that because it's an open space subdivision, we need to add swales along the outside, so no curving, so the water can flow through it, and we reduced the size of the, the, the curving and the grass strip because of that. Catch basin construction detail is mislabeled, uh, pre-cast concrete drain, drain manhole on sheet C one twelve, that's been changed. In the drain trench section, construction detail on C one twenty-three, ESO identified the pipe bedding material, that has been added. The plans do not include proposed street trees, uh, and it, uh, Jeff refers to the board, so we've added a, a separate sheet, the last sheet in the plan set has the street trees, and it also has the signage for the open space that Ian Mazara asked for, um, shown on that sheet with details, um, also, we're asking for a waiver there, instead of street trees every forty feet, seventy-five feet, just because it's an open space subdivision, it's highly wooded, um, we have twenty-two acres of woods there, plus, it's, we're doing minimal cutting around the lot, so there's gonna be trees between each lot. The next is the hydrology and stormwater comments, I don't know if you want me to go through all the details, but that's what Jeff has been talking, going back and forth. Um, we've added recharge chambers for the roof runoff to take care of the roof runoff prior to getting to the wetlands, um, there's some changes to the outlet structure, changes to the pipe that runs under the road at the driveway crossing. Um, we've raised the, um, the bank around the detention basin, a foot, pal, um, Jeff had a concern over, what, fifty or a hundred-year storms that it would freeboard over, we've raised the bank, um. Clarification on that, because we reduced how much.
Oh.
Entering, we have, the bank actually stayed pretty much the same, but we're providing it a quiet free, so the water stage is up lower, so we have the free board that Jeff requested.
Jeff, you comfortable with that?
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim.
Are you comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with the explanation, yep, I, again, I wanna see the plan, see the numbers to be able to report back to you.
They've added a, a long-term pollution prevention and storm, stormwater operation and maintenance plan was added to the plans. The groundwater recharge calculations took into account flooding, swale four bays, there was only twelve on the plan, I don't know what you guys. We pre-provided calculations for twelve. Twenty-eight, the culvert pipe, uh, crossing the road had inadequate soil cover, um, that's been taken care of. So I know unless provided otherwise by the Conservation Commission, erosion control barrier needs to be placed between the proposed work and isolated vegetated wetland on lot three, I know that's been done, because I called him on that, um, before we were supposed to have our conservation meeting. Sheet C one eleven should indicate the height of the proposed retaining walls, that's been added to the plan, a pedestrian barrier, we've, uh, proposed a fence on top of both sides of the crossing. Jeff was missing one of the sheets, that has been provided. Uh, we've labeled the hundred-foot, fifty-foot, and twenty-foot, five-foot, no disturbance zone on the, on the plans, that's number thirty-three, number four, C one thirteen indicates inverse for drain manhole are four, four, twenty-four point four, four feet for the pipes originating from CB three and four, the inverts for the catch basins are four twenty-four point nine, with a twelve-foot pipe and a slope of point five percent, the elevation should be verified. Sean, do you know about that one?
They all got revised.
They all got revised and checked. Um, C, C one thirteen, size and elevation emergency spillway is missing, that was added, invert elevation at the pulp and outlet for basins, as noted, she nineteen-five was a type of grass layer, it was probably just before nineteen-five. And sheet C one thirteen, one fourteen, appears the driveway on lot eight isn't intended to provide access to open space, possibly, it wasn't intended to, to access to open space through that driveway, it just has the parking at the front and then the open space between the two lots.
Okay, if, it is, or it is not intended to provide?
Not, the driveway on lot eight is not intended.
Thank you, okay.
You're just making a parking area, small parking area.
Yes, and then we've, they're gonna own a strip between the two houses, but, but when you bring that up, I did wanna point out there, 'cause I know there's been some discussion of when that open space is gonna get turned over to the town, there is some grading that's gonna occur across that twenty-foot strip between lot seven and eight at the beginning of that access, if not, there's gonna be a dip there that's gonna collect.
Oh, that's why everything should get done, and then, and I think that you're gonna probably see. From conservation standpoint, they're probably gonna be asking maybe for some sort of a, a distinct, distinguished.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so they, I, I spoke to Ian.
A sign or something?
Yeah, no, we, we have a signage plan now, there's, all the, all the, um, corners of the open space have been pinned with, every angle break has been pinned with a iron pin and cap, and there's, uh, signs at every bow, probably seventy-five feet to a hundred feet on all the lines now.
I just think the most important thing is when you got two lots, two homeowners, when you got somebody coming in there to go mountain biking or something, and then, oh, I didn't know that was your nice green grass over there, you know?
Exactly, so we have signs going in that corridor there to stay between the two signs, it's, 'cause I, I thought it was funny, so the signs that she actually sent are to people coming from the open space onto the private property, not the other way around, I thought it was gonna be the other way around, but the signs she want say, you know, you are leaving the conservation restriction, this is private property, please, please do not enter, instead of, you know, you're entering the.
Yeah, yeah.
It's opposite that, so the signs will be facing the open space.
She didn't ask you for signs for both, both ways?
No, she just said, uh, I think they're gonna face the open space, they'll be, they'll be.
Well, 'cause there could be somebody walking out, and they, you would think that they would park there, but if they come out, come out of that land, if they went in on a different spot, maybe, but.
So if they're coming down that, that twenty-foot strip between the two lots, they'll see a sign that says this is private property, this is private property.
Okay, great.
Stay in that area.
Thank you.
On, uh, on sheet, yeah, and then there was another one that they, he wanted, um, and we got into that parking area, he wanted a detail showing the gravel parking area, that's been done. On C one fourteen, there was an undefined proposed feature, two parallel lines adjacent to the, it was probably just an arc line, so I.
No, actually, it was, it was a, or everything was one water, but with the changes to the amount of clearing, we haven't.
Okay, all right. On sheet C twelve, the stone reventment should be include, the size of the stone reventment should be added to the swale four bay recharge construction detail, that was added. Construction details should be provided for the road section with the retaining walls, the water quality unit, the sidewalk and the gravel parking lot, that has been added to the plan, and I bless, that's it, as fast as I can.
Well done.
So Jeff, I guess. We're gonna get any questions, but from your standpoint, i- if everything is addressed on this list, the way that they just said it was, you would be comfortable with the way the plan is presented?
Yes, I would be comfortable if, if the list is addressed as you described, yes.
Any other questions from anybody on the board? Is there any questions from the, uh, public?
So, was it.
Say your name and add us.
Peter Coffin, three old sawmill group. Was a drainage study done, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about most subdivisions, you have to show that pre is the same as post, so are there detention ponds, or how are you handling the increased runoff? Sky jump, several, several different ways, so. To answer your first question.
You wanna state your name, please, and, yeah.
Sean Riordan.
Come on up, go on.
Civil engineer with the applicant.
Yep.
Tetra Tech. So to answer your question, that, that, we did a first study, that's what Jeff reviewed, then all the substantive discussion after that between Jeff and I was about revisions that Jeff saw that he wanted made to the plan and to the, to the analysis, so we revised that analysis, it's been resubmitted with the, the changes to the plan. The stormwater mitigation that we're doing is, we have, we, these things that were, that are called recharge cells, so we have drainage swales that run along the side of the road, and then there's stilling basins or recharge basins installed along those swales, there's also a detention pond at the end of the cul-de-sac, and then there's, um, a series of other mitigation items like dry wells for house runoff, and things like that, so a full suite of, of, a bunch of different means of controlling stormwater.
Where the water exits your progress, that's what you've gotta meet, pre and post, right? So, if you have a detention pond up at one end, but you don't have a detention pond at the crossing. It's just, it just seems complex, plus in other subdivisions. Crashes aren't often included in the runoff, i.e. the, the roof and the driveways, it seems to me that this being more intense, that you need to include looking at the changes at the site, the roofs and the driveways, and without having really good sandy soil, I don't know how you can have pre not exceed post, or vice versa, without a detention pond.
I just, you like, I would ask this.
Say your name, please.
John Manon.
Yeah.
The swells out there, our curbs were between five and eight minutes, really good.
But so, do you have, you have gutter drains going, recharging into the ground?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, we do have a detention basin, but, but there are other measures beyond detention basin as well, so, so it's not exclusively detention basins, so we have multiple BMPs for managing stormwater.
Right, we're, we're still under the same guidelines by the state, but we're doing with low-impact drainage methods instead of catch basins and storm setters and.
So you've done an analysis of pre and post?
Yes, exhaust, yes.
Plans that you have showing there, is that the preliminary plans, that's not the definitive?
No, this is the, that's the definitive.
That's the definitive.
Yes.
So those areas that are in gray around the ground buildings is gonna be the limit of trees?
Yes, and some of that was cleared already, like, um, this area in here on lots, uh, the green, this was a, this is a big field already, that has been a big field, the only area where clearing is here, um, just this area right around the house, but this back area is already a big field, um, this area in here has already been cleared, even though that's not part of the subdivision.
John, and, and we show clearing for septic systems as well.
Yeah, so this is the entire amount of clearing for the septic and the houses.
So that's my question, so that, which is in light gray is gonna be cleared, that which is in green is gonna be kept as trees?
Yeah.
Either, either it's going to be cleared or it currently is clear, so under post-development conditions, it will be cleared.
Okay.
And this dark green is gonna be trees, light green is wetlands, which is already trees, so everything in dark green and the light green is staying trees.
And if you notice, if it, the plan has a erosion control line on that interface between the proposed tree clearing limit?
That's this white, this white dash line is the.
So there'll be no disturbance beyond that?
Correct.
Right, so when, when you just trace that, it seems like there's not gonna be any trees between the road and the houses and the yard, so is there gonna be trees between the.
There are all street trees.
Right, and you asked for a waiver going from forty to seventy-five, because you're saying, well, there's a lot of trees.
Well, there are trees that come between, almost right up to the end of the road.
I can't quite see it from here, but it seems, it seems, looking at the plan, that it's pretty much gonna be, uh, uh, cut pretty open, uh, which boils back to my, I expressed a concern at the last meeting, that the, the bylaw requires a landscape architect to help in the layouts, and this is where a landscape, I'm not, uh, faulty, I'm sure engineers, you have good, uh, we, we have landscape architects. Right, but was a landscape architect hired to do this work, 'cause that's.
No, because it's, it's, it's selection of a street tree.
So, right, the bylaw mandates a landscape architect be part of the planning process and design team, and so it's not only in the layout of the road, it's the identification of other natural assets, like the historic quarry there, and kind of the, the layout, the neighborhood, if you will, uh.
Okay, I, I guess that I could, a, a landscape architect, you could spend ten thousand dollars or, or fifty thousand dollars on landscaping per house, I mean, if you, I mean, if you want, we're talking, usually on the subdivision approval, they put, a landscape design is done as in fruit trees, or, they don't tell you how many mulch beds you put in your front yard.
Right, and it's, and it's typically associated with the right-of-way, not, not the individual house lines.
Because the town has, the town has to maintain these trees after they grow, and then they end up, I don't.
I believe the purpose of a landscape architect is so that the open space can be preserved, and the open space is more than just the amount of acres that's, uh, given as open space, in my mind, it's the level of detail that is needed for the site design at a pretty much intense duplex on small lots, how you lay in the house, how the driveway goes, and you could, other trees be left, that that is the skills that a landscape architect would bring to the job, and I believe that that is the purpose of the bylaw, that's why they want a landscape architect in at the beginning to achieve better designs.
So, my view is, so, in this case, we put the road where just in cop path was. There was a cop path, we followed the cop path, except for a shot corner here, that wouldn't have flown through planning board for the road, road design, where we, we followed a cop path up to here, this is the only section of the road that doesn't follow the cop path, we get right back onto the cop path and follow the cop path right to the cul-de-sac. Um, it's, it was a pretty easy design, it's only seven lots, we've kept the tree cutting, um, we've already graded out most of the lots, so we've kept the grading and the tree cutting as close to the lots to get the drainage to work as possible, um, we've also kept it as close to the, the, um, septic systems with grading as possible, so there's not a lot that could get saved by grading this any different, um, we haven't, we haven't gone in and, and, and leveled the site, we're trying to work the lots where, you know, with the hills that are there and stuff, and, and do a low-impact subdivision.
As far as I know, on Pond Street, I don't recall any landscape design for a lot on that, so I'm really not too concerned about that, I mean, we can give an open space, we're, we're preserving a, a big piece of, of open space, but I think it's.
If it's gonna be an issue of asking for a, the seventy-five-foot waiver on the street trees, we have no problem with doing forty feet, it's just that there are so many trees out here that are gonna be saved, and not including the twenty-two acres of trees.
When you go do a conventional subdivision, you're gonna be a lot more going on.
Right, and there's gonna be a lot more room between driveways, there's gonna be a lot less roadside.
There's a lot bigger lots.
Country drainage, so, so really, it was about trying to be consistent with the other elements.
Mr. Chairman, Bob Sweet, fifty mil foot street, I see on the plan on sheet C one hundred, that the asphalt's the wetlands with the road to get in there, um, was there a wetland replication planned on this?
The road is existing by.
Yes, um, we call that, we've got a little more wetlands, the replication area is right here, there has been a whole wet, wetlands replication, and notice of intent filed with the Mendon, um, Conservation Commission on July first, um, we just haven't had a meeting, I think they lost their agent, so we.
They see this right here, Bob?
So this is the replication area right here.
The green part.
Um, so yes, there, we filed a notice of intent, uh, we were trying to do it at the same time, uh, like I said, everything was submitted on July first, um, FUDS list, everything, checks the state, um, we just haven't been given a date yet to go in.
I have another question, yes, didn't Mendon just change their open space by, uh, to what, uh, forty, sixty, or fifty-five, forty-five?
Um, I believe it's fifty-fifty, and we meet all of. Percentages, yes.
Now, does that include wetlands, or is that?
No, it has to be fifty percent upland, and we meet that, we're fifty-two and a half percent upland, so this whole back section, once you get through here, this whole back section is all upland. It's very, very nice back there, though, we're, that's probably the nicest part of the property that we're giving up, um, it's just getting back there is crazy, that's why we look at the whole section.
All ribbon is all.
Yeah, this is wet, we would've had a cross here to get two more lots up here, or whatever. or whatever.
So that dark green is all upland?
This is all upland.
Go ahead.
I'm on CONCOM, and we haven't had a meeting, hadn't had a chance to review it. And I think it would have been appropriate to have some input at the preliminary stage, because when you show your yield plan, not only have the initial crossing, you have to fill, I think, 2,000 to 3,000 square feet. You're also going to have to cross even bigger wetland to get access to the land in the back. And that crossing, combined with what your front crossing, would have been more than 5,000 square feet.
I don't...
My history on CONCOM, we've never approved more than 5,000 square feet.
Excuse me. I showed that on the existing cop path. There's already a crossing and a culvert on there. You can drive all the way out here to this back. This wetland actually didn't cross there. It connected across on the flags and connected across on the flags, and there was a cop path that went across. So I believe we've already, we calculated that, and we're doing the conventional subdivision, and we would be able to keep it under 5,000 square feet.
And regardless, it qualifies limited project, creating upland access, so it wouldn't be subject to the 5,000 square foot threshold.
I mean, the... Obviously, if there's something, if the plan, it's been done before, the plan and board approved something, and conservation hasn't approved it, and it has to come back and be revisited, well, then this...
Yeah, so I would just recommend not signing the plans. So, you know, I'm asking for preliminary, you know, the approval of the plans. Same as Jeff, he's going to go through that, and I would say they don't get signed until the conservation...
We want to make sure the conservation gets every, their stuff done, and we want to make sure that Jeff, once you get the final, they have the things...
We're looking for an approval from you, but I don't expect to walk out of here with signed plans.
No, and that's why they were...
I know that both conservation, and some things can change in conservation.
Exactly.
And then we can make the changes, and then you guys can sign.
And the board health as well, right, to those lots?
Our septic systems, correct.
Yep. My last question or point is, I gather you're asking for a waiver for one part of the road. Oh, in order to avoid asking for a waiver, you have to do a bit of it, did. Our town engineer said, oh, well, you could avoid grading it out if you put in streetlights. That really goes against my feeling of what is meant for open space protection, and that streets, streetlights on a cul-de-sac in the middle of the woods, in my opinion, is very inappropriate. And that, speaking as a CONCOM member, I would rather have you grade out the road and maybe lose a few trees as streetlights on every night, where I don't think the light is needed or supposed to be.
Okay, well, I'm going to go with the fact that it's a cul-de-sac, it's heavily wooded, there is no lighting, it's going to be very dark on that street. So a couple of streetlights, I think if, if you were to live there, maybe you would feel differently. And maybe the seven lots in this, what, 14? These are all duplexes, correct?
Ah, no, some of them are single.
Okay, so majority of these houses are, you know, there's two families living. So, I mean, the street lighting, I don't think is a bad thing. I think it's a... If the kids are walking home from their buddy's house and there's streetlights, I think that's not a bad idea.
And just to be clear, so there's four streetlights proposed, all four are on the causeway, and they're specifically in response to the fact that in the balancing of the, what are called SAG curve dimensions, you... We asked for a waiver from some of the geometric requirements for the SAG curve, which made us, you know, get the road a little bit lower so we had less fill in the wetland. In response to that, Jeff's comment was, a good way to mitigate that additional SAG curve is to put lighting at the bottom of the hill, which we thought was a great idea, and also worked well with the fact that it's kind of a causeway section. So if you were going to light something, it would be to light that causeway section.
And now, Jim, I mean, what is the grading, a big thing, or...
Yeah, so of course, in an open space subdivision, and especially if you're causeway, we're trying to keep the grades as close as possible. So if you have to raise that up, that means you go have to go wider all the time. You have to grade it out wider at both ends. By putting a couple of lights there, now you can see past where just, if you were... A SAG is different than a crest. The crest you can't see over. Jeff, make sure we met the crest requirements. But SAG, you're looking into like a hill. If it's not that and somebody's coming downhill, then you can't see them. But if you put a light there, you can see them. It's not like your view's obstructed like a crest. You can't see...
We're trying to limit this, the work in the wetlands on top of that.
Well, just real, if I can, real quick, the SAG is right here. So this is where the low point is on the causeway.
Yep.
The requirement in the town requires us to stretch that SAG out so it's shallower and longer. What it did is it pushed our grading into... It grades up really fast here.
Yes.
So if this SAG had to get stretched out, what it would do is it push our grading into this hill and basically almost double our earthwork. So what we've decided with Jeff is the most appropriate measure was to get some relief from that SAG, given the fact that we have very few house lots, you know, the geometry...
You're not putting 75 lights in there, you're putting four.
Yep, there's two on each side of the road.
Yeah. Okay. Does that answer your questions?
It answers my question. I don't like the answer, because I do happen to live on a private road, which is the next one parallel, Old Stone Road, which has three or four people on it, and doesn't have streetlights on it, and that's the way you go by and Jim's doing prefer. And I know Jim doesn't like the lights as well. I guess he's not hearing any of these people. I guess one more major is that you've kindly, I guess, and I'm not sure, given or providing a right-of-way to land in the back that's owned by somebody else?
Yeah, so there's a landlocked piece right here, and they were here at the preliminary meetings, and they asked that we could provide them access. So this would not be a right-of-way. We'd need that 25-foot strip to them.
Right, so now my concern is you have eight lots cul-de-sac, and then they are going to be putting on at least one house, or maybe two, depending on what the ZBA allows them. So now we're going to have nine, eight, we're going to have more than eight lots on a cul-de-sac.
So, no, we won't, because this is a seven-lot subdivision, and we purposely made that 25 feet so they can't do a road.
It's a seven lot because you've already carved off the one, which is the largest, so it's an eight-lot subdivision on a cul-de-sac.
No, it's not. It's seven lots.
We're under, we're under right now a seven-lot subdivision. What we're removing.
And it doesn't provide legal...
You have to buy frontage area and access to the first lot. It's an A and R plan subdivision. It's a seven-lot subdivision, any way you look at it.
Yes.
We've agreed, we would need that piece over to them. We only made it 25-foot wide, not 50, so there's no chance of them putting a road in. You need a 50-foot right-of-way for the town. They would still have to go through ZBA in a public hearing to even put one house back there with the driveway. So it's not like, oh, they can just come back here and throw a lot in. They'd have to go in front of the zoning board of appeals to put a driveway in one house back there. And according to them, that's what they were looking for. They weren't looking to develop that property. They were looking to put a house on a piece of property they own in town and have owned for many, many years in town.
That's not even a build-up lot right now unless they, they have to go and go through there.
Yeah, they have to go through ZBA. They don't have the required...
That's out of the question right now.
Correct.
I guess I just had, it's not a question so much as a concern, because it's going to be a private road. So now we're doing low-impact development on a private road that is just problematic as to maintenance getting done. So if it's not going to be done by the town, I guess it's going to be done by the homeowners, which is a good thing because taxes don't have to support it. It's just problematic in the maintenance.
I can answer that. So we have a homeowners agreement already drafted. It's already been recorded at the register meetings. It already went to the town, me and town council approved you, and was approved by town council. It's already been planned. So we do have a homeowners association. There'll be a fee associated with each resident that they have to pay, residents that they have to pay in for upkeep of the road. And the reason we did this is to take the burden off the town for upkeep. No other reason. We followed all the bylaws for the open space subdivision. We just didn't think the town would want the upkeep of it.
The highway to popular will be very happy.
Yes.
And they, you will, you will maintain, they will maintain everything on that.
Yeah, snowplows, the homeowners association, they will listen.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bob? We have questions.
Mr. Chairman, before we go on to other subject, can I respond to a couple of comments? One, with respect to our review of the hydrology calculations. When we review a definitive subdivision for this board, is with any other board, unless there's going to be a specific... If at definitive, someone said, hey, we're not looking at lot development as far as management of stormwater, each lot's going to have to stand on its own and demonstrate to the planning board at a later date through lot development plans that each lot is individually addressed with respect to stormwater management. When we review a subdivision, we review it as a whole. We take into account expected areas that are going to be grass, going to be impervious and so on and so forth. We don't just look at the road and the road right-of-way, because as we know, with almost every subdivision we see, there's one or more stormwater basins that handle runoff from not only the road, but the developed lots. We did the same here. And again, not to beat the point to death, but the one issue I did have was that I, it's prudent and it's required. The peak rates of runoff and compliance with all 10 mass DEP stormwater management standards occurs before water enters the resource areas, for protection of the resource areas. And that, that's how we dealt with stormwater and hydrology review. And secondly, with respect to the streetlights, I did not require the applicant to place streetlights. I pointed out to the applicant and their team that the deficiency was in its site distance because of the fact that a SAG curve is illuminated at night by headlights that have a certain upward beam, and if the SAG curve is too steep, the beam does not project far enough for stopping site distance of a vehicle. The problem is illumination, and one possible solution is in fact illuminating by other means. And where the applicant was coming forward, and it wasn't going to be burden on the town resources to pay for streetlights, they opted to go that way. I would have been saying, hmm, town, do you want to do this, when physical geometry could take care of it by filling the area and reducing the curve.
Of course, that's the town's responsibility to maintain a lighting mechanism.
That's what people would be buying into. And of course, as John Nino pointed out, if it's a crest vertical curve, there's no solution. You can't see over the crest vertical curve, and there's no solution but cut it down. So that's how I interacted with the applicant and their team.
Thank you.
Bob, I'm sorry. What is the percentage slope on that?
Yeah. On the SAG?
Yes. Well, it's not really a slope, it's a length of the vertical curve.
But it drops down.
Yes.
It drops down a certain amount of feet.
Yeah.
I think he's asking what's the slope of the road going up out of there.
I knew that at one point.
Did you, what is it, 8%?
I don't know.
I did too.
So...
File sheets?
It's a COMB, so there's no variance there, so it goes, you need an idea.
So from the top of where it starts to where it flattens out, in order to go towards it comes back out?
Well, so on the first curve, it's...
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that?
You got it right.
Okay. Beginning, beginning at Hartford Avenue West, the grade comes down 2% toward the causeway, if you will. Then there's a vertical curve, and it goes from a minus 2% grade to a plus 10% grade over a length of 210 feet. So the important pieces of information here is 2% grade down into the vertical curve, a 10% grade when you come out of the vertical curve, and the K-value, if you will, which is the average distance to obtain a 1% change in grade is 17.5.
I'm sorry, Jeff, can you repeat that?
The, the, the last, the last, okay, it's 2% going in?
Right.
10% going out.
Correct, okay.
The vertical curve is actually a parabola, and we use, as engineers, we use something called a K-value, which is the length of the vertical curve divided by the arithmetic difference of the grade going in and the grade coming out, to define how abrupt the grade changes along that vertical curve.
So is that applied on both sides though, or each side individually?
The K applies to the length of the vertical curve. Outside the vertical curve, it's 2% when you just come into it.
Right, on the high side it's 2, and that goes to 10.
Then it goes, and as soon as it gets to a 10, it starts coming out of it because immediately there's a crest vertical curve, starting to bring the grade back.
Which is a, which is a...
20% slope it does.
Bob, if you would like, let me take a look at what the road looks like.
It's instantaneous.
Yes, and during the, I just want to add something. During the preliminary, the preliminary plan and the first submittal, we agreed that we could go to 10% during that.
Yeah, I just...
Yeah, so we...
I'm learning this stuff myself.
So we did bring that more than the pre-submittal, the pre-preliminary and the initial submittal, that we would be at 10% there, because if you can see, so if you look at this, this is the road line, and these are the cuts. So if you tried to make this longer, now you're going to be cutting into this hill more, and you're going to be filling past that hill where the wetlands are more. What I do in an open space subdivision is reduce all that, so you don't have to do as much cutting and fill, and that's what we tried to do. We tried to minimize that, those cuts and fills the best we could through the roads. I mean, yep, time is money. Yeah, and it's just, you know, in open space, you try to save as much so you're not grading out as far. So if you have to do a fill that's 12 feet, you're going to have to grade that off to the lot, you're going to have to cut, you know, on the cusp, you're going down as arrow, and you do a three-to-one cut, you're going to have to grade out that amount of distance, four times six. Where you do a half-off and fill, you're only going, you know, eight feet.
All right, we're good.
What I heard, what I thought I heard earlier is that you tried to keep the causeway area as low as you could to avoid more and more fill in that area.
Correct.
Now, we've been there a ton of rain. So what's...
That's been capability. That was one of Jeff's comments in those letters, and I believe you raised it, or you re...
We qualified the overtopping storm event, so...
So 100-year, 500-year, 500-year?
Under, under existing conditions, the road overtops at about a 12 and 1/2 inches rainfall. That's about twice 100-year. Maybe slightly less than twice 100-year. So...
And Jeff was, you were everything that, you were okay with all that?
I'm okay with the responses. I'm still going to look at the information, but very valid point. The concern, correct me if I'm wrong, is how much will the water level rise in that pond?
Many of our roads overflow now. You go down 16 through Holliston, the ponds are on both sides just before you get to the close by this. That's all this is.
Well, this is men, what we're worried about here. We're addressing all, that's what, that's why he's here.
Right.
Those roads were built probably 200 years ago.
Just making sure that they're accurate.
Bob, this is a 2 feet of all grades, right?
Yeah.
Oh.
That's what it was sounding like.
It's eight-foot walls on both sides. We just wanted to have to go to 16-foot walls on close by.
So if I just can answer real quick, it's, so it overtops right now with 12 and 1/2 inches of rain. Under proposed conditions, it's going to overtop with like 21 and 1/2 inches of rain. So it's higher, and it stores a lot more water before it overtops.
Okay. Now, do you have to put any kind of drainage underneath to get water from one side to the other, or...
There's an existing 18-inch culvert that is in the causeway right now. We're maintaining that exactly in its current geometry.
Because that must have to, that must all flow in one area, you know, high to low.
Close to the right.
It does, close from left to right on the sheet. So the light green that you see on the left of the causeway, there's a, there's a, you can actually see it here. There's a proposed culvert here in the exact same location as the existing culvert, at the exact same entrance, in the exact same size.
Just to know that the half-house is an accepted way to get to the back line.
All right. We're going to get all that wetlands, conservation's going to go through all that stuff, so we're good with what you have for right now. You're going to get, finish off with Jeff?
Yeah, I have to be both over the grid.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Conservation approved it.
We got to get everything done, so make a motion.
Make a motion to approve public hearing for 27 to 29 Hartford Ave. West contingent on conservation approval.
And...
And definitive plans.
Revisions, I guess, we go with.
Revisions to the definitive... Revisions to the definitive plan.
Second?
And revisions to the definitive plan.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close the public hearing.
Pleasure working with you. We didn't see eye to eye.
One or the other. You swap them out.
Second.
So it will don't be just the two things, contingent on client progress and revision to the plan.
Yep. Want to take these, use them in conservation? Want to take these and use them in conservation? Save the paper? Don't have to cut any more trees that way. Oh, jeez.
Here you go, bud.
Here you go, John.
All right, thank you.
One hundred minutes.
Yeah, Barry's here, can approve the minutes?
I can't do the 14th because I wasn't here.
I was here, right? I hope that Bill wasn't here, right?
Yes.
All right, so I can... You want to make a motion to approve the minutes on the 14th because Jimmy can't. Gail. We're making a motion to approve the minutes for July, June 14.
Okay, wait a minute, hold on. I'm sorry, June?
June 14.
Okay, as written. 30 seconds.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July 26, 2021, as written.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Okay, so that was July 26.
Yep.
July 26.
I don't think I was here for that one.
Yes. Barry.
Did you want to appoint the two people to the master plan committee first and then do the five Morrison?
Are they here? Lisa Burkino and Kate Merton? It looks like there's no females in here. Well, other than Gail, I mean, I'm sorry. I don't know, do they need to be here?
I missed that.
Do they need to be here?
I don't know. I don't think so.
All right, we can do that.
Because I know Bill asked me this morning to add Lisa Burkino to it, so all you have to do is...
Is there a motion to appoint to the master plan committee Kate Merton? Hope I'm not botching that. And Lisa Burkino?
Let me make the motion.
That's fine.
Make a motion to appoint Kate Merton and Lisa Burkino to the master plan committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Great.
Okay, I'm going to... In accordance with MGL Chapter 48, Section 11, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Monday, August 23 at 7:00 p.m. in person in the Minden Town Hall to consider a site plan review, special permit submitted by Bill Drexel of Segrew and Associates. Okay, to construct three commercial buildings at Five Morrison Drive. Office and subcontractor use. One of the property is BL... Oh, the owner of the property is BLKB Corp., Ellingham, Mass. Public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing for Five Morrison Drive.
You don't need to do that.
Come on up.
Damon opens.
Yep. Fell down the stairs.
Did they?
I just want to see the plans. Oh, is everything's in here? This is all good?
Just in case I didn't know if you need anything.
Three buildings now, okay.
He looked after us.
Yeah.
Saw the stuff stop.
They don't tell me anything.
It's a different applicant.
You do that? Did you do that?
No, the police did that for that.
Nice job. Nice job. Jeff, have you... Excuse me. Have you looked at any of these?
We have. Again, for the record, I'm Jeff Washington with Graves Engineering, engineering review consultant to the planning board. We did receive a set of plans on July 26. I believe I was here for the public... I wouldn't call it a presentation because the public hearing wasn't open, but the plans were delivered to this board. Thank you, thank you, the smittle. We got underway with our review. Unfortunately, we've been a little backlogged, and we haven't been turning the reviews around as quickly as I would like, but as we were wrapping up our review, a new set of plans and a new set of... A new stormwater report came into our office last week on the 18th. And I think we'd be prudent if we do not issue a review letter based only on the first plans, but work our way through the second plans and the second stormwater report because, quite frankly, we had some comments, a list of comments, and I've got the feeling that some of those will have been addressed by way of the revised plans and the revised stormwater report.
Okay.
I don't want to get into any more detail than that because...
Well, I think that before we can do anything with anything further, then we should not waste the time. Let him review the updated plans that you sent, get that addressed, and then that's going to probably make all of our lives a lot easier because he's got to approve and get everything in order, and once he does that, then it'll make us move a lot quicker.
If I could make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, if we stay away from the engineering issues tonight, in case the applicant has a presentation or something, some information to present to the board beyond engineering...
Well, we still have to go to conservation with this, too.
Understood.
So it's a... There's a lot of stuff. I think that we need to get through your end of it before we start. I mean, I... The aesthetics of the building in a commercial, in an industrial park, I mean, you guys, that's something with you. I mean, I see that they got the brick on the bottom, and they're doing the siding. So...
I think we've already reviewed all these.
Yes, that's all been addressed. I think we just need to... We need to get the engineering, the stormwater management, the, you know, any soil tanks that you're going to be having on the property. That is the most important stuff that we need to move through. So, I mean, where there's another... Now, what was the reason why was the another set of plans?
What happened was we had dug some test pits in the front where the septic is. We weren't able to do that until after the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And that was sort of to verify the groundwater. We had results from a previous set of water tables that were completed back, it may have been 2012, I think. But since then, the site had been cut down, or as part of that proposal, the site was cut down. It's pretty well leveled now. It's kind of gravel.
Yep. I know the site.
And what we wanted to make sure was that those test pits were still valid, that they were not cut into, like, say, the existing ground was up here, now it's down here. And what happened was I didn't complete the drainage design in that, in respect to the groundwater table.
Okay.
Until I had those results. One of the things that was affected by that, one of the drainage features that was affected by that was the roof drains are all separated from the storm runoff that's collected on the pavement. And we recharged that roof drain system into the ground. So, like I said, I needed to make sure that my drainage was complete, and we had those water table results.
Oh, that's good. Obviously, it changed because you had a...
Yeah, so we did that, and so I was able to, you know, hardline the...
Now, have you got that, the septic design into the board of health yet?
I have not. That's one of my next steps is to get that and then get it set up with a notice of intent.
Okay, so I guess we'll let Jeff do his work and make sure that everything is done up, you know, the way that he wants it, and you get with the board of health, then get on the agenda for the conservation, you know, as soon as you got that ready, then we can hopefully try to do this all in one kind of smooth motion.
And also on this site, as well as being leveled off and denuded, the detention ponds were built according to the design that had been done previously for another proposal prior to 2014, I think it was. That's when we... When I had it last was in 2014. And this, the condition that it's in now is the condition it was in when we did it in 2014. So...
The detention basin, one of them is installed, correct? On the other side of the driveway, or...
Yeah, there's... Yeah, on either side of the driveway. There's three equalizer pipes that connect the two of them together. The one thing that I need to do with my drainage caucuses is to make sure that everything fits in those detention ponds. They've been neglected, they're going to need to be cleaned, and they're a little bit overgrown and so forth. So I need to make sure that everything was... Would fit into that detention pond along the perimeter, the backsides of the buildings. As you go in through the center, that's all paving, but to your left and right and in back of the rear building, it's what they call a grass paved type of product. It'll support a fire truck and...
Behind the back building? Behind this back building, it's all along the...
Yeah, it's on the east, west, and north sides of the buildings. It's shaded in green.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Was this plowable material? Plow over this?
Say again?
Snow removal.
Can you plow the... What kind of material you putting behind that?
It's like a GeoGrid, six inches thick, that you put crushed stone in, and it holds it in place. Support a fire truck plowing.
Okay.
And in this case here, I wanted to put some Lumen seed in there instead of the gravel, and then we let it out to freeze.
Well, the Lumen seed is going to... It rains, there's going to be mud.
It's going to be very rarely used anyway.
Well, I know it's that one time when you got to... If you're proposing something that's going to be gravel, then we're going to stay with the gravel. I don't think you want to put... If you're going to do landscape out there, they're not going to... The fire department's not going to agree that that's accessible for the fire.
But I'm saying, the GeoGrid itself is what supports the truck. It doesn't matter what it's filled with.
Well, that's something that our engineer will have to, you know, address.
So, and also, we're waiting for a little bit of some information, too, on the fire, the sprinkler system for the buildings.
Okay, I see that there's a letter here from the fire chief. Did you... I'm assuming August 11th, you must have got that?
I have not received it.
"I have reviewed the plans for Five Morrison Drive and have no issues. I appreciate that they were able to address my previous concerns on location of the cistern and note that the cistern needs the draft infill points per fire department specs with hard surface to access them." There's going to have to be pavement or something compatible to get to the cistern with a truck, you know, or close enough to where they can hook a hose to it.
Is it a problem if I go over that directly with the chief?
You can go over that with him.
I would address with him the material you want to put around the back of that building.
Yeah, yeah. And Jeff, I would like you to address that, too.
I'd be glad to take a look at it. There are products out there that... One supplier in particular, I know I've been sat through presentations of use of this for supporting fire trucks, supporting construction, loaded construction traffic. I'll have to look at the infill material and see if they speak to both granular aggregate as well as some type of Lumen seed. I have seen some other applications where Lumen seed had been proposed with the honeycomb and a base underneath and so forth, again, for the specific purpose of supporting firefighting apparatus to get around the perimeter of residential buildings.
I mean, in this case here, the subgrade would be gravel, compacted gravel, to support the grass paved unit. But the grass paved unit, which was this set of circles that interlock, these mats that interlock, those would be filled with the Lumen seed. So it wouldn't be sitting directly on Lumen seed.
Oh, they have like honeycomb little, and the grass grows. Oh, no kidding? Kind of like a grid type of a setup? All right, well, whatever you have, that needs to be addressed with Jeff.
And I'll take that... I'll go over that with the fire chief with the product and make sure that he's okay with it.
Again, and he... Address it with... Once you talk to the fire chief, but make sure you talk with Jeff because, at the end of the day, he kind of needs to be the guy that's...
Okay.
And it gives us the okay. So, yeah, why don't we let you do your work, and then we'll... The next meeting is when?
September 13.
You okay with that? You think you'll have all your other stuff?
Yes. What was the date again?
September 13. It'll be a seven o'clock kind of start type of thing. No, we're not saying that you'll... We start them all at seven.
No, I understand.
That way, there, if there's nothing going on, we can jump to you sooner than later. Okay.
Is that three weeks from today or two weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks? All right.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Five Morrison Drive to September 13, 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, I expect this week I can't have the letter out, but definitely the week after.
All right, thank you. Well, I'm sorry, you had a question and I didn't.
In my interest to learn proper procedure, what would your recommendation be for the steps on how to proceed through a plan? Go to conservation first, go to board of health and then planning, or...
Well, it all depends on the situation. I mean, this is a commercial... This is a commercial site where they're going to... They're doing a site plan, so it kind of has to almost work together, you know? When you have different separate lots that have to go to the building department to get a building permit, they can work... Each lot will work with conservation if they have a wetland situation, a wetland where they fall into the buffer zone. Some lots don't. So basically, like, if you're doing a subdivision, you just concentrate on the scope of work to build the road, and then each individual lot will get addressed at their own time, you know? And board of health does their own, you know? A building permit does not get issued unless you have a, you know, a well permit approved, you know, board of health, you know, approved by the conservation. So there's a list of things that you have to do before you even get a building permit.
But even putting a road in, do you go to building, to planning first?
Try to do... Try to get on everybody and just do the best you can, but it all depends... Usually, everything works together. Estate regulations for the most part.
Mr. Chairman, if...
Like I said, in the interest of not wasting anybody's time, because I'm trying to... trying to do is to learn the right way.
They should have a traffic plan, but they don't. Oh, do you think, I'm sorry, but, but, Jeff has one more thing. Go ahead.
Different, different engineers and developers have different strategies, but the very important point is, talking about a subdivision, planning board approval, conservation commission approval if required, and border health, they're all separate permits that one does not rely on the other, they're all individual, so an applicant could obtain two of the permits and not get the third, and by default, they can't proceed until they, until they address that third one, so.
Right.
Unlike a building permit that you, until you get different department sign offs, you get the building inspector's sign off, land development's a little bit different.
Yeah, well, I mean, even now, you can't, you can't get a building permit if you don't have border health approval or, uh, well, you know, conservation, I mean, it's, you know, you can get a foundation permit, but you can't go, you can't really move forward, but.
We have a motion on the table.
To what?
Continue the public hearing.
Sorry.
No one second.
No one second it.
All right. Sorry, Jim. We got, we got, Bob got sidetracked.
All on table?
All right, thanks.
Hi, thank you, guys.
Good night, guys.
All right, Jeff, thank you.
Yes, I will CCU when they go to the board. Absolutely.
Oh, Jeff, who, who recommended the, uh, to do the updated, uh, bond, was that Fred?
Fred had asked, and it was sent, his request went to Gail and, and, um, and myself, and I make sure that Gail is aware of it, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, it was quite a while.
It was quite a while ago, it was quite a while ago.
That's why Fred required it, Fred had asked.
Fred asked for it, but I never would proceed until my client, the board, or their representative authorizes.
Oh, that's good, you know what, then you can, that, as long as we have that, stop taking my stuff.
I can provide.
Hold on.
Okay.
Uh, wasn't on the agenda, so.
No. I just think he wanted to have an updated one in the pile, probably.
Motion to adjourn.
Did you send one to?
Yeah, I saw, oh, uh. Motion to adjourn.
I sent one to.
Did you second the adjourn?
Yeah.
Gail.
Damon, I want to.
Jimmy did the motion.
Oh, not me.
Are you doing that after the meeting, Damon? Hello?
I second it because I did.
Are you doing that after, or is this before the meeting closes?
We're done.
Oh.